I got about two minutes to, if more would you please lay us in prayer. Or you start.
Our most gracious heaven father, we all thank you for this beautiful day. And lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that you give us each day. And we just thank you for your son, Jesus, that died on the cross for us. These things were yes and no night. Amen.
Amen. He will remain standing, as I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to this Father, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and limited to just a small world. Yes, some fellow. Thank you all for coming tonight. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and. Roll for us.
Yes. Here Eugene.
Here.
Mayor Self.
Here.
Brenda.
Here.
John.
Here.
All right. Again, appreciate everybody showing up tonight for us to work on this ordinance. Each of you have a copy in front of you of the proposed ordinance with a few changes. But not is not complete. And that's what we're here to determine. The definitions, I think, are self-explanatory. There's no need in going over those. Let's see, okay. All right. In section two, for inspection, it says, "A mayor or designated council member or designated employee hereby authorized and directed to inspect, to make inspections to determine the condition of mobile home parks located within town in order that health and safety of occupants of mobile home parks and of the general public may be safeguarded, safeguarded."
Okay. I mean, I was questioning there. Did that not say to inspect the home?
This is just the, this pertains just to the park.
Okay.
This paragraph. That allows us to go in and just check for the general condition of the park to make sure there's no safety or health hazards. All right. B, it says, "The mayor designated council member or designated employee shall have the power to enter at a reasonable time upon any private or public property for the purpose of inspecting and investigating conditions relating to the enforcement of this ordinance." C, "It shall be the duty of every occupant of a mobile home park to give the owner, their or his agent or employee, access to any part of such premises at reasonable time for the purpose of making such repairs and alterations as necessary to effect compliance with this ordinance or with any lawful order issued pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance." Any problems with that? Any questions?
What's that in simple? I mean, they simplified that for me, if you don't mind.
Which one?
Oh, C. I mean, is that, is this? So someone from the town can go in there at a reasonable time and it's, okay, and inspect the park premises? Is that right? Am I understanding that right?
Now, C. Basically saying, "Those who live in a park give the owner of the park or their agent or employees access to any part of the premises to make repairs." Repairs or upgrades is necessary to be in compliance with the ordinance. Okay. All right, section C. All right, "Park permits, applications, mobile home constructions, and applicability to recreational vehicles." All right. A, "It shall be unlawful for any person to construct, maintain, or operate any mobile home park within the town unless he holds a valid permit issued by the mayor upon approval of the town council in the name of such person for this specific mobile home park. All applications of permits shall be made to the town council who shall cause to be issued a permit upon compliance by the applicant with the provisions of this ordinance and of any other applicable legal requirements and upon written evidence of approval from the health department." All right, "Mobile home parks are permitted only in zones or districts in which such is provided in any ordinance the town or county line, as may be adopted from time to time." Mobile home parks permits are non-transferable, and this is a sentence that I added, are non-transferable when a mobile home park has sold or changes ownership. The new owners will be required to submit an application for a mobile home park permit for the new owner."
Okay, isn't that what?
Sue Francis, well, this is just stating that whenever it changes hand, the new applicant has to submit the application permit. Submit an application to be permitted in their name. It doesn't address the compliance to or bringing it up to. They're just stating that the permit has to be reissued to the new owner, basically.
I mean, in their time.
Right. As it's sold or changes hand, it's just saying that the new owner will be required to submit written application for the permit. Okay? All right, B, "No person shall construct or alter a mobile home park in the town unless the plans and specifications of such park have been submitted and approved by the town council and the county health department, as provided herein." All right. C, "Applications for original permits shall be in writing, signed by the applicant, and containing the following: name and address of the applicant, the interest of the applicant in, and the location and legal description of a mobile home park and property plan. Three, for new construction, a complete plan of the mobile home park showing compliance with all applicable provisions of this ordinance." That, I think, is, grandfather's, or just says, existing parks don't have to comply to that. So, all right. For such further information, as may be requested by the mayor or the town council to enable the town council to determine that the proposed mobile home park will comply with legal requirements. D, "Permits will automatically be renewed each year provided a management has met all requirements set forth under this ordinance." E, "A complete plan for the purpose of obtaining a permit to be issued by the town council with the approval of the health department, as provided herein, shall show: one, the area and dimensions of the tract of land; two, the number and location and size of mobile home lots; three, the location of service buildings and other improvements constructed or to be constructed within the mobile home park; four, the location of recreational vehicles or other transient parking spaces." Now. I think we need to, in this, under section E, distinguish between new construction or new, a new mobile home park versus existing mobile home parks. As far as the having to submit the area dimensions, I think this should only apply to a application for a new park. And I think E, the first sentence in E should.
Probably the parks that they have now are all, the lots are already grandfathered in where we couldn't require them to be a certain size anyway.
Right. Nothing's changing with the existing, but later on, we're going to get into what even the existing parts are going to have to do. Because there is a couple of things in here that we want to have them be required to do. But I think with paragraph E, we'll start the paragraph for new mobile home park. All right, "For new mobile home parks, comma, a complete plan of the proposed purpose, for the purpose of obtaining a permit to be issued by the town council." So that's the only thing I would change under E. It just started off with, for new mobile home parks.
For new mobile home parks, comma, a complete plan for the purpose.
So everything else in E would apply to new mobile home parks only. All right, to F. "Mobile homes placed on a single lot or in a mobile home park shall comply with the International Building Code." And I think, or insert there, the International Building Code of 2018, as may be amended from time to time. The building code provides that if a mobile home does not bear a seal of an independent testing laboratory approved by the governmental jurisdiction within the, within the unit it is placed, it is subject to the inspection in such, in the same manner as other instructions. What this says, mobile homes, they have stickers by the door of independent testing facilities that say they meet minimum requirements that's set forth by HUD and so on and so forth. As long as it's got that sticker on there, they don't have to comply, comply with International Building Code per se because they've been inspected and certified. But if they do not have that seal, then they are subject to inspection and compliance with the building code. So if it does not meet the building code, when inspected, it has to be brought up to code. But that's on a timer. It would be inspected. Okay, do you have a question?
Question here. The scenario. They have, they put a new mobile home in, okay? They bring a new one, they bring one in, it's not new. But when it was built, they put that sticker on there, okay? It has the sticker on the door. It has no furnace in it. It has no air conditioner in it. Somewhere along the way, they went out and they're not there. So they're planning on cooling it with the windy unit and heating it with the space heater. Where are we, where are we standing?
Nothing in this mobile home ordinance says that we inspect the interior.
Of a new one? I mean, of a one coming in?
Of a home coming in.
Okay.
We can put restrictions on the age, but.
It could have been.
It's not a new construction, so we can't require an inspection. And we currently don't require any kind of interior inspections. But we can perform exterior inspections of the park. And if it's not adequate. They can, basically, as long as they comply with the age limit of the ordinance, it can be. It has to be hooked up to electrical and water and subject. As far as air conditioning and creature comforts, other than the basics, we have no say.
Okay, okay.
And whoever is renting it, it's up to them whether or not it's acceptable.
Yeah.
I mean, there are limitations on what we can do. So, but anyway.
They don't have a stitching cord running out the window next door so that it has to.
It has to have electrical, it has to be hooked to an electrical pole. And that has to be inspected. And there's a fee for the inspection. So. All right, any other questions? Oh, not F. All right. G. "It is unlawful for any person or owner to place or attempt to place any mobile home older than," originally, we said seven years, fifteen was a number that was provided, suggested. That is subject to change as we determine. Anyway, "No older than, in this case, fifteen years as determined by the mobile home's manufacturer date in any park, mobile home park, or private mobile home site in town."
Basically, I asked why we go to fifteen years on that?
Just not as restricted as seven and.
There's a lot of mobile homes that are older than seven years old that are still in good condition. And in this part of town, it's just, you know, seven years is just, I mean, I live in one that's almost thirty years old.
Yeah, I understand that, but we're talking about what can be brought in to the town.
Yeah.
And set up in a mobile home. Well, if it's already fifteen years old and the life expectancy on a home that had been taken care of, they're saying is only twenty years old. That's what some of them said in that meeting the other night. Well, then it don't have but five years, you know?
I don't think, up here at the corner, any of those are lasting five. Well, some of them have well past their prime, but.
I mean, we are just talking about what's being brought into the town.
Right.
Set up in a mobile home park. I'm just, my opinion, that a fifteen-year-old units, to me, that's a low. If we're trying to cut, cut back on how it looks in the town.
Well, I think that we just need to make sure that it's in good living condition. If, as long as it's in good living condition and can pass inspection and, and we're putting in here that they have to maintain it, then it's going to be taken care of. And it can, I mean, you can repair mobile homes just like you can a home. It's just that they've been allowed just to bring anything in here to let people live in. And they get away with it. So they bring, they buy the dirt-cheap things that half of them don't have floors in them. And that's the main concern that we have, that it has to be safe to live in and maintained and kept safe to live in. I mean, that's the way I feel about it. Because in this area, it's just, it's really hard because there's so many low-income families that need housing. And if you start saying that they can't put a home in here that's, you know, less than seven years old, I mean, that's putting a burden on the people who own the parks because, you know, they can't afford to buy those kind. But we just need to make them understand that we're not going to allow garbage to come in here. That it has to be in decent shape, in good shape, safe, safe for people to live in. It has to have windows in it and doors on it and floors in it. Those are the kinds of things that.
Well, let me say this. I've got what you're saying. And I'm not saying that seven years is the magic number here. I'm just saying fifteen seems to be a little bit too old for me. And the reason I'm saying that is, the white trailer that sits on the hallway stop, when it was put in, it was a fairly new-looking trailer. Well, our fire department went in here, went in there about three or four weeks ago and fell through the floor, like broke a leg.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. And, you know, I don't know how old that trailer is.
Yeah.
But, you know, we've got to somehow make the owners know that they have to be maintained, you know? I mean, I had water damage in my house, you know? I had to have my whole kitchen floor replaced. And, you know, you, I mean, you can't, that's what they need to understand. If, if the owners own these trailers, they need to keep them livable.
It could have started breaking the laws.
Yeah. And if somebody that owns their own trailer wants to park it in their park, then they have to abide by the same.
Standards?
I mean, I, you know, that's just, living here all my life, that's just, you know.
Well, now, you were talking about a lot of what you were saying referred to the inside of the mobile homes now. How do we know what they're going to look like?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I thought we were going to be able to go in and inspect them periodically.
Well, we can.
Well, since they're rental properties, they really, you know, that wouldn't. Don't the inspectors?
I don't know, I just, you know.
Does the, for instance, say like, they have a lot of rental properties in Centerport. Does Centerport have the authority to go there, have their building inspector go out there and inspect those properties when someone moves out to see if they're safe for anybody else to move in? Do they have that, a building inspector?
I don't.
That would be, I don't know if that would be the town's responsibility. Or what counties.
Because it is a rental property.
It's a rental property. But, the only time inspections are done is if something is modified, there's a construction permit issued of what, for whatever reason. And those are subject to inspections then. I don't know of any home rental property that has to be inspected by a government entity before it can be rented.
I didn't know, I didn't know if there was something.
I think the owners are allowed to go in.
Yeah. The owners are responsible, that's deep as the.
Yeah, they can go in there.
Yeah, the problem with these owners is they really don't care.
They don't care.
Well, they. Slum lords. That's why there's so many slum lord laws. Well, this, what is an acceptable age for you, Steve?
I'd say somewhere around ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
How about ten or, oh, ten? But a waiver can be issued upon successful inspection of anything older than ten?
That works, yeah.
Yeah.
Something to that effect?
So if they're looking at one that's older than ten, they have an option of applying for the town to inspect it for them.
Yeah.
Now, I can just see, okay, don't go buy a mobile home. And she's buying it from a lot down in Pittsburgh or somewhere that's a repo, okay? Now, she's going to tell us, this mobile home is eleven years old and it's to ten, so Steve, I need you to go down there and look at it and tell me if it's going to be acceptable. Y'all follow me? Does that work?
Yeah, but, well, I mean, wherever they're buying it from, you're going to have to inspect it before they buy it.
Somebody's got to inspect it.
Yeah.
Now, we don't do any inspections for purchases. If somebody wants to buy a trailer, it's up to them to inspect it, the town will not.
Now, and the man that's going to sell her that trailer, oh, yeah, it's a good one, it's a good one. Well, if she looks at it and she don't see anything wrong with it, and she gets it out here, it costs money to have those things moved. Now, she's going to look it in and say, well, I got this really good deal, man. It's, it's only eleven years old, so you want to come here and work at it?
And that's, we don't do a pre-bought purchase inspection. We will not get into that because that's not the town's responsibility for making purchase judgments. If they bring it into town, if they buy it and bring it into the town, it will have to be inspected before it's permanently fixed to the site and subject to, you know.
They have to bring it up to code before they could have it hooked up?
Well, it has to pass an inspection, what I put down here, and I might have to check on it, but by a qualified mobile home inspector.
Before renting? Before renting or?
Or before it can be. Or before it can be, uh...
Before I can turn the power on.
Positioned within the town limits. But, uh...
Up to ten years or...
Ten years. Well, it's like this, it would be unlawful, or it is unlawful for any person or owner to place or attempt to place any mobile home older than ten years as determined by the manufacturer's date in any mobile home park or private mobile home site in town. A waiver may be issued upon a successful, uh, inspection by a certified or a qualified mobile home inspector. Uh, we'll put a restriction on there, but, uh, allow, that way we can inspect older homes before they're positioned in here. That we know that they're in good shape as they come in. Ten years, we're assuming everything's fine. Anything older than ten years requires inspection. Uh, and we may have to specify, uh, habitable and safe without hazards.
This is just for the parks, right? Mobile home parks?
Yeah, well, now, that's, this would, uh...
Somebody bought a acre of land in here, in here, and they buy, they got a fifteen-year trailer they wanted to put in. They still gotta be inspected to put that trailer on their property?
Yes. Yes. It, uh, that paragraph covered both, um...
For instance, in a park.
Mobile home parks or private mobile home sites.
Okay.
In other words, no mobile home, uh, home manufactured prior to ten years shall be placed in the mobile home park or private mobile home site in town. And that's, uh, at the end of that paragraph is where the waiver should be inserted, the waiver, uh, statement. Uh, and we need to put in here there's what? There should be a fee, an inspection fee paid by by the mobile homeowner.
I've seen that, I've seen that Dings Ferry all the way up goes out to that lead. Yeah, really?
Yeah.
You don't notice that, uh, that they're not trailers, but they're the utility buildings that people live in?
Huh? On Dings Ferry?
Yeah, it's going out.
Yeah.
Sitting off in the woods and people live in them. And it was like, you know, it's a building to bind like loads.
Small.
Yeah.
Somebody, excuse me, sir. All right, we got, uh, any other questions or comments on, uh, that paragraph, or G, or any other additions? All right. Okay, uh, H. Except as expressly stated in this ordinance, the provisions of this ordinance do apply to recreational vehicles that may temporarily be located within mobile home parks pursuant to, and as may be authorized by a special permit limited to one-year terms. That may, uh, in a re- reasonable discretion of the town council be used, uh, be issued to the owner of a mobile home park. All right, questions or comments on paragraph H?
What does that, you, are you talking about if they're renting?
Well, it allows them, uh, with a special permit, uh, if they have a permit from the town, that they can, uh, allow RV parking, uh, or people to live in RVs for up to a year.
I'm wondering, 'cause I have an RV park. I mean, I...
Well, the way I'm...
Travel trailer parked in my yard.
We're talking about living in it though.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's what I interpret that to be, is, uh, they can live in a mobile home or in a, they can live in a mobile home park in an RV for up to one year, but no longer, not a, uh, permanent, uh, full-time RV.
You can have it down there, but go back. Carson Road, trailer, the mobile home park on Carson Road. Occasionally, you will see an RV, whether it's a C-Class or a Pase or something, parked on one of their lawns. Won't stay there a long time, but it'll stay there maybe a month or two.
Yeah, that's, that's, some of them stay quite a while.
Some of them will stay there quite a while.
And then, on the other side of that is, you got, uh, workers.
Work, yeah, working.
Out-of-town workers, and they live in there while they're working, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
But you, you give them a year, that's long enough, or come back in and tell us what your situation is, and find another permit for you.
Right, right. It'd be so nice if we had that property up here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And have it parked nice enough that somebody would come out and stay with it, like that.
Okay, all right. Uh, section four. New mobile, new mobile home park environmental, open space and access requirements. Uh, what's changed here was adding the new mobile home park to, uh, specify that the following applies only to them. A, site location, the location of the mobile home parks shall comply with the following minimum requirements. One, free from adverse influence by swamps, marshes, garbage or rubbish disposal areas, or other potential breeding places for insects or rodents.
And we have that in the regular for the ones that already exist?
Well, it, um, I think...
I mean, that's the main thing about, you know, keeping them clean and safe.
Yeah, um...
And free from debris and stuff that kids can get hurt on.
All right, there's, uh, uh, section five is going to be for existing mobile home parks. Um, and location of mobile homes parks must comply with not subject to any pollution such as drainage or garbage disposal areas. Uh, so we cover that, uh, to a point. But when planning or constructing a new site, this is, uh, more detailed, uh, in the next paragraph is two. Uh, not subject to any source of pollution such as drainage from garbage disposal sites, areas. Uh, three, comply with all applicable ordinances of the town or county line and the laws of the state of Alabama. B, drainage requirements. Uh, one, the ground surface in all parts of the, uh, every park shall be graded and equipped to drain all surface water in a safe effect, efficient manner. Two, surface water collectors and other bodies of standing water capable of harboring mosquitoes and other insects and vermin shall be, uh, shall be treated in an approved manner. C, soil and ground cover requirements. Park grounds except paved areas shall be maintained with vegetation or other national, natural cover that is capable of preventing soil erosion and the, uh, emanation of dust during dry weather. D, uh, vehicle location. Except as herein prescribed, no person shall move a mobile home on lots where it conflicts with any applicable ordinance. Mobile homes now parked are declared non-conforming and shall be governed by the provisions of any applicable zoning ordinance. Uh, specials, exceptions enforced at the time of the adoption of this ordinance shall continue in force for the duration of the period of time granted. Uh, vehicles illegally parked shall comply with provisions of this ordinance within one year of the effective date of the ordinance. E is minimum park area. Uh, lot coverage, separation between homes, foundations and skirting. One, minimum area of a mobile home park. Each park shall have an overall area to vote, to vote, to vote, to de-vote to, uh, park purposes of not less than three acres.
And what does that mean?
Hmm?
What does that mean?
It means that at a minimum, they have to have a minimum of three acres for a park.
Before it can be a mobile home park?
Right. It has to have at least three acres dedicated to the park.
Okay.
Two, placement of homes. Lot coverage and separation between homes shall be as follows. A, all plans for streets, drainage and utilities shall be submitted to the town council for approval. B, all planning, all planned handling of garbage and garbage pickup shall be shown on said plans and adequate space shall be provided for garbage trucks to turn around and negotiate through the mobile home park. C, each mobile home lot shall have a minimum of two, uh, street parking spaces per mobile home lot. Each mobile home lot shall have a minimum of at least five thousand square feet in size and have a minimum width of fifty feet. Uh, the minimum yard size shall be thirty feet from side yards to the, um... The minimum front yard shall be thirty feet with side yards to be a minimum of thirty feet. At least forty feet of separation shall be ma- maintained between homes. Patio covers, carports, hauntings and other attached additions shall be included in determining separation between homes. All streets in a mobile home park shall be, uh, weather paved or packed gravel. All right, uh, two. Each mobile home shall be placed on a foundation, uh, except transient homes. The foundations may consist of piers at least eight inches thick and spaced no more than a hundred and twenty inches on center under the framework. The piers may be of concrete or concrete block. The foundation shall be constructed in such a way to completely conceal the undercarriage of a mobile home or shall be, uh, screened or skirted. F, required setbacks and parks. All mobile homes shall be located at least thirty feet from, uh, any park property boundary line abutting upon a public street or highway and at least twenty feet from other park property lines. All right, G, uh, street construction and design standards. Uh, all streets will be paved or packed gravel and shall be maintained free of holes and other hazards. All right, section five. Existing mobile home parks. A, site locations. The location of, uh, mobile home parks shall comply with the following minimum standards. One, no subject, not subject to any source of pollution such as drainage from garbage disposal areas. Comply with all applicable ordinances of the town or county line and laws of the state of Alabama. Uh, B, uh, vehicle location, except wherein, wherein prescribed, no per- no person shall move a mobile home on lots where it conflicts with any applicable ordinance. Mobile homes now parked or declared non-conforming and shall be governed by the provisions of any applicable zoning ordinance. Special exceptions enforced at the time of the adoption of this ordinance shall continue in force for the duration of the period of time granted. Uh, vehicles illegally parked shall comply with the provisions of this ordinance within one year of the effective date of this order. C, each mobile home lot shall have a minimum of two, uh, street parking spaces per mobile home lot. All right, D, each mobile home shall be placed on a foundation except transient homes. The foundation may consist of piers at least eight inches thick and spaced no more than a hundred and twenty inches on center under, under framework. The piers may be of concrete or concrete block. The foundation shall be constructed in such a manner as to comple- completely conceal the undercarriage of a mobile home or shall be screened or skirted. Uh, E, any mobile home park for, uh, any purpose, any mobile home park for any purpose on a mobile home lot prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall be legally non-conforming until such time as the mobile home is moved. Therefore, it may be, it must, therefore, it must be in compliance. Thereafter, it must be in compliance with the ordinance. So, any, any mobile home that is currently in place, uh, is exempted, uh, until it is moved. And then it has to comply with the mo- the minimum requirements of the mobile home and the tenure, et cetera. Okay, all right, any questions on that? All right, section six. Sewage disposal requirements generally. Uh, every park shall have a sewer disposal system adequate for conveying and disposing of sewage from mobile homes, service buildings or other accessory facilities. Such systems shall be designed, constructed and maintained in accordance with the state and local laws and shall conform with the regulations for the legal authorities having jurisdiction. If available, the system will be connected to the town sewer system. Uh, provisions shall be made for sealing the sewage connection inlet on mobile homes do not apply the lot, do not occupy the lot. All right, uh, section seven. Refuge disposal. The storage, collection and disposal of refuse in a mobile home park shall be managed as to create no ha- health hazards, rodent harborage, insect breeding areas, accidents or fire hazards or air pollution. B, all refuse shall be stored in fly-tight, watertight, rodent-proof containers in a location convenient to any mobile home lot or space. Containers shall be provided by the mobile home, mobile home owners in sufficient numbers and capacity to properly store refuse. I think that should be mobile home park owners. I think that should be mobile home park owners.
Oh, boy. When we lived in a, I was trying to remember, when we lived in a park, didn't we have our own garbage cans that we had to put out on the street?
That was 50 years ago.
Well, it depends on where you, it depends on the park. Uh, you know, some parks you may have your own garbage can you set out by your driveway and garbage truck will come through. Others will have big dumpsters, uh, where you have to take your...
Take it, put it in.
Down there to the dumpster. So, that's up to them, uh, to provide an adequate source. All right, um, again, I think in section B, instead of mobile homeowners, it should be mobile home park owners.
I agree.
Okay? All right, C, all refuse shall be collected by Blount or Jackson County Contractor Refuge Disposal Service where available. D, where municipal, county, or private disposal service is not available, the mobile home park operator or owner shall issue, uh, ensure the disposal of refuse by arranging transportation to an approved disposal site or in the discretion of the town council may require to have a minimum to have and maintain dumpsters in numbers and locations as the town may require. Okay? Section eight, fire protection. Uh, in addition to the requirements of the ordinance, of this ordinance, the mobile home park shall be subject to the rules and regulations of the Fire Department, National Fire Protection Association, and Alabama State Fire Code as may be amended from time to time. Section nine. Every mobile home park owner or operator shall maintain a register containing the records of all mobile homes, recreational vehicles, and occupants, occupants using the mobile home park as provided by state law. Uh, section 10, compliance with regulations, supervision of the park. The person to whom a permit for a mobile home park is issued shall at all times operate the park in compliance with this ordinance and shall provide adequate supervision to main, maintain the park, its facilities, and equipment in good repair and in a clean and sanitary condition at all times. Section 11. Parking on a private lot, A, shall be unlawful for any mobile home to depart within the town, uh, within the town for any purpose at a site other than a mobile home park complying with his, with the provisions of this ordinance without a special exception granted by the town, uh, town council handwriting as may be, uh, allowed at the discretion of the town council. Abika will furnish names and mailing addresses of all property owners within 300 feet of the proposed mobile homes, uh, site boundary line in order to assist the town council in its determination of whether a special exception may be permitted. The town may, but is not required to, hold a public hearing as a free condition to the issuance of a special exception and permit, provided this section does not apply, provided this section does not apply to mobile homes parked in the mobile home sales lots where one mobile home may be used as an office and one mobile home used for night watchman. B, a temporary parking of mobile homes may be allowed by the town council for office use in any district during the period of construction activity. C, after a special exception has been granted by the town council, the mayor will issue a permit in accordance with a special exception for which there is, which there will be no charge. D, any mobile home park for any purpose on a single lot prior to the effective date of this ordinance will legally, will be legally, uh, nonconforming until such time as a mobile home is moved thereafter, thereafter, it must be in compliance with this ordinance. Section 12, screening of mobile homes undercarriage. All mobile homes shall be, shall have a skirting installed between the base of the structure and the ground in which to completely conceal the undercarriage of the mobile home. B, the undercarriage of any mobile home park, any mobile home park, mobile home park subdivision, or a mobile home, uh, park on an individual private lot at the time of this adoption of this ordinance or hereafter shall be, uh... Or hereafter shall be closed, skirted by brick blocks, insect and, uh, insect-resistant wood, that comma should not be there. All right, closed, skirted by brick blocks, insect-resistant wood, or material manufactured for that purpose. The installation shall be in accordance with manufacturer's installation instructions. These requirements shall also apply to and include all mobile homes used for residential purposes of which a special exception has been approved or may be approved by the town council. This section does not apply to mobile homes that are placed on a permanent foundation which conceals the undercarriage. D, in mobile home sales lots, temporary skirting shall be provided on the undercarriage of any mobile home park for display along any public right of way. E, all mobile homes affected by this requirement, by the requirements of this section shall comply with these requirements within 30 days of the effective days of this ordinance.
Now, does that mean the mobile homes that's here that's not underpenned?
Right.
They have to be?
Within 30 days after we pass this, they are required to be skirted, underpenned.
Take a little break.
Yeah, yeah. I, yes, I understand.
Well, like, so Frank just rents her, most of hers is lots rented, so the owner of the mobile home then is responsible for un, for underskirted?
Right. The owner of the mobile home, whether it's the mobile home park owner or individual, the, uh, mobile home owner is required to skirt it.
So, she's got three or four that she rents and three or four where the piece skirted?
Are they underskirted?
I don't know. I'm a gambler.
Seemed like, I wasn't really, you know, looking, but, uh, I see the one up here that's four ways top is obvious, but, uh, I don't recall any of them not skirted. So, uh...
The one on the left going into Jones Park, it's skirted.
Yeah, because that man's been there a long time at the park. That person that lives in that trailer right there on the left that you go in, they've been there a long time because they lived there when I moved here and I've been here 13 years.
And that's the one I was talking about, the compartment fell through.
And the one on the left, the little single white?
Uh, coming this way?
Yeah, coming this way. When you turn into the park, there's one on the left, it's a single white.
The double Y has only been there for a couple of years.
Yeah, I was talking about the double Y.
The double Y, okay. You're talking about the last double Y that was put in there?
Yeah.
That they don't put that in?
Yeah, that's what I said, the same thing. I was shocked. He told me specifically, that's the one with the wrought iron porch with wood floors in it. Said he walked through the front door, fell to the floor.
All right, let's get back, uh... Get my mask on. All right, um... All right, section 13.
Okay, before we go to section 13, can we back up to E here?
Uh, yeah.
Where we're going to give them 30 days to put the skirting around? You know, some of that skirting does cost a bit of money. So, if, if, could we add some time to that? Give a person a little more time to, to get that skirting wrong if they come and talk with us? Can we put a provision in there for that?
Well, we can, they've got 30 days to do it. If they can't make it 30 days and they contact us, we'll work with them.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll give them some leeway, but, uh, we gotta have, we gotta have time to it. And look, you gotta have it done, uh, if not, talk to us. I'm, you know, more than, more than willing to be flexible if they come in and they're reasonable. Uh, if they're gonna have it done in 30 days, in 60 days.
Yes.
Uh, but, you know, 90 days, I wouldn't want to go with it, past 90 days.
Not go past 90, right.
But, uh, you know, let's leave it at 30 and then we can address it at that time. We have the option of giving them another additional 30 days, um, before, uh, we wouldn't...
Well, the problem with some of that is that you're gonna see a lot of rusty tin and all kinds of stuff people's gonna put around, just like that trailer park up at the end of my road. They've just got tin put around it. Just nailed. It's not, you know, normally when you underskirt a trailer, it has, uh, it hides the top of the tin so you can't see that it's uneven, but they just nail it on there.
We, uh, uh, try to, we give them some specifics here, um, of what type of material, uh, brick blocks, insect repellent wood, or material manufactured for that purpose. Tin is not manufactured for that purpose. I mean, if we want to really get down to it, we can make them tape it down and put up skirting.
Well, tin, you know, tin wouldn't look bad if it was done right.
Right.
If it's done right, yeah. With this vinyl that you put up, you put the little string up, put the piece in, you cut it to the length.
Yeah, but that costs a lot of money.
It pulls together, but it does cost a lot of money.
Okay. Well, there's always gonna be somebody who wants to do it different, uh, but we, we need to have something in writing so that we can enforce skirting of some door.
It's to their benefit, I don't use wood because I don't bring termites.
All right, this, uh, anything else? Any more comments on, uh, section 12?
No.
All right, uh, section 13, compliance with the Uniform Code for the Anchoring of Mobile Homes Act. All mobile homes and mobile home parks shall conform at all times to the state of Alabama Uniform Code for the Anchoring of Mobile Homes Act. Alabama Code, section 24 dash 5 dash 30, uh, as may be amended from time to time. I think we got a, parentheses missing there.
Now, is this, the ones that are moved now have to conform to that?
Yes, yes. That's the state, uh, that's the state law. It's been in existence for a while.
Oh, yeah.
All right, uh, to the extent not inconsistent with this or any other ordinance of the town and county line, the provisions of the said state act are hereby incorporated herein by ref, by reference as if fully set forth. Section 14, this is a, the next two sections are, have been added, they were not in the original one. Section 14, abandoned, condemned, or uninhabitable mobile homes. Any mobile home that has been abandoned, condemned, or declared uninhabitable shall be removed from a mobile home park immediately. Deconstruction or dismantling for salvage of the abandoned, condemned, or uninhabitable mobile home will not be allowed due to fire safety and health hazards that the mobile home park residents and the general, and the public at large would be subjected to. Questions or comments on that?
Sounds good to me.
Uh, did not add any, uh, timeframe other than immediately, uh, because they don't need to be, they need to be moved.
So, this, we're, this would, the, the homes are in this, at the four way?
Yeah.
They got to go because they're abandoned, they're just sitting there, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the way, that's intended. If it's not, if it's uninhabitable, it needs to be removed because it poses a sa, a safety and health hazard to the residents and the general public.
But if they're just empty because they're not rented right now, that wouldn't apply.
If they're partially deconstructed.
It's like that one on Dean's Ferry Road that's been taken apart and just sitting there and...
But that's, that's what this is to address, attempt to address. All right, section 15, mobile home park identification. A, each lot in the mobile home must be visibly, have visible markings slash signage to identify their lots to assist fire first responders in identifying the scene of an emergency. B, each mobile home park will provide a permanent map posted at the entrance to the mobile home park. The map will include the name of the mobile home park, lot numbers, should be pearl, and location of the lots within the mobile home park. And location of the service and other improvements, service buildings and other improvements. All right, anybody have a problem with any of that?
Okay, who did they provide that to?
Huh?
They provided to who? To the fire department or no?
No, the map is a permanently fixed map at the entrance to, you know... There's, uh, basically, you drive in, there's a sign that shows you the location of all the lots, so... I know that's gonna be a pain to do to begin with, but, uh, in case of individual lot markings have been lost, marked, or hidden, uh, at least at the entrance of the park will have something.
Hidden in the last.
All right, uh, section 16, enforcement. In addition to any other remedy at law or equity, wherever in this ordinance, any act is prohibited or is... is prohibited or is made or declared to be unlawful, or whenever in this ordinance the doing of any act is required, or the failure to do any act is required, or the failure to do any act is declared to be unlawful, the violation of any such provision of this ordinance shall be punished by fine or of, not or, of not less than fifty dollars, nor more than five hundred dollars, or by imprisonment in jail, or at hard labor, or both, such fine imprisonment at the discretion of the judge trying the case. And if the violation of, or a failure, if, if the violation of failure or refusal to obey, to comply with any provision of this ordinance is a continuing one, each day's violation shall constitute a separate offense and shall be punished accordingly. Any questions on that? Legalese. Uh, so, serv, servile filletty, uh, this section, paragraph, sentences, clauses, or phrases of this ordinance are sur, proverbial, and if any phrase, clause, sentence, or paragraph, or section of this ordinance shall be declared invalid or unconstitutional by the valid judgment or decree of any court of competent jurisdiction, such invi, invalidity, invalidity, or unconstitutionality shall not affect any of the remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, and sections of this ordinance. All right, did we leave anything else?
I have to do, is buy me business license, because it's got to be in her name.
Yeah.
And that's just legal, I mean, that's just normal about any business.
Well, they're not gonna be happy with anything because they don't wanna do anything but what they're doing right now. They just wanna buy these old trailers and bring them in here and let people live in them, that's not good to live.
Problem up on one block.
Yeah. So, they're gonna be upset with, no matter what you do.
Yeah, they're, everybody, everybody's not gonna be happy, uh, and you're never gonna be able to-
Please everybody.
Please everybody.
I was asking Steve, are we gonna let the lawyer look at this too?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I was gonna say, um, I'll take these notes that I've made from our discussion tonight, and, uh, you know, give it to the attorney, let him, uh, go over it and make what changes need to be, and make it, uh, legally enforceable, and, uh, then I'll bring it back, and we'll make it, uh, identify any major changes, if any, to what the lawyer does, and, uh, we'll bring it up. Uh, we'll probably, probably bring it, won't bring it up again until December, this December meeting, because, uh, as you know, the first Monday of November is our organizational meeting for the next term, um, and, which will be the second of November. Uh, and I am going to propose that we start the organizational meeting at six that night, because we're gonna have to have a regular council meeting right after, immediately after the, uh, conclusion of the organizational meeting, because we got a couple items we got to, we got to address for the FEMA application, what I was saying, change to our building ordinance is the amendment to, uh, update the reference to the International Building Code, uh, our existing ordinance refers to International Building Code, uh, of twenty, uh, two thousand and three. For the FEMA application, we have to justify that we're using twenty fifteen or twenty eighteen, so it's a little, a, ordinance to amend the existing ordinance, change in one line to read International Code, uh, of, of twenty eighteen as our reference.
I got an email from a lady this week about that, she wanted to know which version we were using.
Well, the existing, uh, ordinance is two thousand and three, we're gonna update it to twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, not for her, but, uh, it just so happens-
Just let her know that we're, we're on the process?
We're going to be, we're, uh, going to be updating our ordinance, or amending our existing ordinance to use the twenty eighteen.
And when will we, we be amending it?
We're gonna-
Yeah, we're gonna amend, amend the existing, um, ordinance to change verbiage so that it, uh, refers. Anyway, um, but that's, that's, uh, the plan right now, and one o, the other one was a, other item would be a resolution, uh, authorizing or committing the town to matching the, matching funds for the new FEMA brick application, building resilient infrastructure in communities.
Did anybody contact you about doing the Christmas?
Haven't heard a word from anyone. Um, I heard, I overheard Scott and Sue were talking, and he told her, just let me know when we want to get together, and they were discussing shopping. Now, I've got the money, but it was left over, I don't know, I, I've been waiting on one of them to say something to me, I'm not.
Yeah.
And I, I wasn't in the conversation.
Well, you know, the only thing that we need to be involved with as far as that goes is donation.
Uh-huh. Well, you know, I've got the notes and everything from LifeStreets, so.
Well, that's, uh, that is all that I have for the council.
Well, I made the motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Murder made the motion, Brenda seconded, all in favor, all unanimous. Uh, again, thank you very much for coming to this work session. Um, this is something that we needed to address, and I think this is the best setting to do so. So, all right, thank you again.